Order, Ken, would you take the role, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Steeler?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Dender?
Here.
Chair Gerard?
Here. We're asking if you're able to please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask for approval of the agenda, I'd like to introduce our new city administrator, Mark Stats. I believe he's going to say a couple of words to the commission, and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to appear tonight and kind of get a lay of the land. I want to make sure I attend each of our boards and commissions at least once here in the first few months, so I don't go, you know, three years and someone asks me, "Have you ever been to the planning commission?" And I say, "Well, no, I actually haven't." So I want to make sure that, you know, I get a chance to see you guys in action and see our staff in action and just get a feel for how we do things around here. And so that's my goal tonight, is just to be a fly on the wall and let our staff do their wonderful work and see the lot of you do the same. So please be assured that I'm a resource if you ever have a question or anything that you want to chat with me about. My door is open and welcome you to give me a call or to stop on by.
Thank you. And we'll ask if there's any more to add at the end if we have any questions for them. So with that, Chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
Chair, I would move to approve the agenda, however pulling item 6B from the consent agenda, please.
All right, I have a motion to approve the agenda with 6B pulled. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. It's an indebatable motion. All those in favor signaling by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll have our open forum. If anyone would wish to speak to any of the agenda items tonight or anything in general, we welcome you to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, spend a couple of minutes giving you your thoughts. So does anyone wish to speak to at the forum tonight? And do we have anyone online that's looking to speak?
We no longer provide online participation.
All right. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the open forum. But the Chair is looking for a motion to approve consent agenda item 6A, approval of a minute from the regular meeting of February 26, 2025.
Oh, moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second it.
Any discussion? I got a motion and a second. Any discussion, not a motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signaling by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
One abstention.
We'll move on to consent agenda item 6B, site plan review, QuickTrip parking lot expansion, 4868 208th Street North, resolution number 031-12-25-01, case file number PG24-1269. Susan, you asked us to pull this. Go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions. One of them is on the landscape irrigation. Even if one puts in natives or zero scape, for the first two years at least, they need to be watered before that they will be sustainable. So I would ask that in the resolution requirement 17E, that it have a period after the word "will survive and thrive," period, deleting the new landscaping plan so that you can not have irrigation. I think that if you look at some of the landscaping materials that are there, there have been, granted, they're fairly old, but there have been some that have not survived. So that is, that's my first question. And my second question is, may I assume that QuickTrip owns both of the lots that are now going to be part of the QuickTrip? That, you know, that the lot line comes down where the new parking will start. So does QuickTrip own both those lots?
Yes, and they have, in fact, combined the two into one parcel.
Then my question regarding that is, how will that affect the ability of the second piece of the parcel to be used? Our long-range plans show a baggage road along that street. 208th. That eventually there'll be a baggage road along there, and I'm not sure that the city's long-range plan would have that half of a lot just be vacant and weed-strewn and open for dumping. So I'd like to know what the vision is for the other half of that lot, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, it's my understanding from talking to the representative from QuickTrip, who is here to answer questions as well, as well as they have no plans for it right now. Want to leave it undisturbed. Their focus was to get the parking and the additional access.
Staff thoughts about the irrigation, please?
I understand the concern. We can certainly tweak the resolution, the language. We are trying to emphasize less irrigation, more natural, but native, but yes, we've got to make sure they grow also.
Other questions, Susan?
No, sir.
Other commissioners, any questions?
No. Ken?
Yes.
Will they be able to use a portion of the parking lot? Right now, there are some semis on 208th that are parked there. There are folks that have that, use that on occasion for parking. How are they going to make sure that folks will be able to get in and out of this new entrance exit for the parking? And are they, and final question, are they going to put an entrance toward the back of the building?
The second part, no.
Okay.
Strictly for allowing vehicles to go around the building.
Okay.
Are you, just so I make sure I understand, there's people or drivers that leave their vehicles parked out here on 208th? Well, one would hope if they see a new driveway that they won't block the driveway when they park their vehicles. That would become a police enforcement matter if they do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Chair is looking for a motion to approve or deny this site plan review. And if you're looking for, if we are making a recommendation here, it would happen to be on page 14 if you'd like to know where it's at.
We need, Ken, you need two separate motions for the site plan and then the resolution?
No, the members of the commission, the motion is to recommend approval of the resolution. And so it'd just be a change to condition 17 in the conditions which are the same in the resolution.
Chair, I would move approval of the staff recommendation approving resolution 03-12-01 for the approval of the site and design plans for the proposed revisions to the previously approved site plans for the QuickTrip facility with a change to item 17E to stop at the word "thrive" to read "Irrigation in the landscape areas will need irrigation to help ensure plantings will survive and thrive," period.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on a motion? Any, Ken? No, I thought, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signaling by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Whoever's here from QuickTrip, congratulations on your project.
Can I ask a question then? So what you're saying is you require irrigation now?
Nick, come up to the mic. You give your name and...
My name is Nick Newham. We're from QuickTrip across Wisconsin, 1606 Oak Street. Just so I understand, you guys are now asking for irrigation when the original request is to put in native plantings. So I paid for a designer to design this for native plantings and to avoid irrigation, and now you're telling me I have to go back and do it different? I'm just making sure I understand what you're saying.
Yes, sir. And since it's mine, may I respond? In order for those plantings to exist, even if you do native plantings, they need to be watered in at least the first two years. In addition, because of the salt and the conditions next to pavement where it gets really hot, even native plants in hot summers, if we have a dry summer, will die. And if you take a look at some of the plantings that have been in place and granted for several years, they have not survived well. So yes, for us to make sure that your plantings will survive, you need irrigation.
Can I make a suggestion then?
Yes, sir.
You shouldn't ask me to pay a landscape designer to design something that you asked for and then tell me at the end that I can't use it. Yeah, sure.
Sir, you would have needed a landscape designer in any case, whether there is irrigation or not.
Correct, but now I have to pay for it again.
No, sir. Your native plants will thrive better if you have irrigation there, and once the native plants are fully established, you may not have to use that irrigation after the first two years. But unless there is a commitment to have somebody water them every other day for their first two years.
So is there a limit, or I have to irrigate the entire lot?
Where do you have plantings, sir?
Pretty much the entire lot. And then there'll be grass in the rest of it, so the grass seed you don't want watered?
Mr. Chair, I think Nick and I can work out where irrigation would need to be. I don't foresee it on the far east part, just where the new plantings are.
Okay.
But you and I can work that out.
All right.
Anything else?
Anything else, sir?
No, I just, no, I'm good.
Thank you. We'll move to item seven, concept plan review for Hidden Creek South, case file number PG25-1303. Ken, are you or Abby?
I'll take this. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before you this evening is a concept plan for future phases of the Hidden Creek subdivision development. We're calling it Hidden Creek South. It's phases four through eight. The map on the screen is the area. These two parcels are the primary area. The Hidden Creek development phases one, two, and three are up to the north here, Headwaters Parkway running through the middle of the area. The proposal then, the concept plan would create lots for 173 single-family homes on a mix of 50-foot wide and 65-foot wide lots. Applicants' design team also included what we call ghost plants for the adjoining three parcels to the east and to the south to show how there could be interconnection between what's being talked about this evening and future planting in those areas. The ghost plants are really not part of the discussion, but it's good to know that hopefully things will line up and you don't have streets dead-ending that don't go and connect to each other. But again, the focus is this plan primarily this evening. Again, it's the same development team that's done the Hidden Creek project so far, same proposed builder, Capstone Homes, would be building the homes in here, at least at this point. For review, the commission, concept plan review is, as quoted at the bottom of the report and from the code, is to really provide comments and feedback to the applicant and the development team to the extent to which the proposed subdivision generally conforms to city standards or not. And concept review does not convey any legal development rights to that. Really a chance to give preliminary feedback to the applicant from the commission and then eventually the city council. So this site is within the Headwaters Masters, Headwaters Master PUD. Again, another phase of that. The entire PUD was over 620 acres. This is getting out towards the west and south end of that area. Page 35, the report, which is page two of this report, outlines the lot sizes that were approved in Headwaters PUD with a lot area of 7,000 square feet, lot width of 65 feet. This proposal has lots, the blue lots are the smaller proposed lots here, 50-foot wide, ranging from 6,300 square feet to maybe 8,000 square feet. Again, that was somewhat of an estimate. The red, lots with the red structures are the 65-foot wide lots consistent with the rest of Hidden Creek, and they would range in size from 7,500 to over 15,000 square feet. So one key difference in this phase, as proposed, is the introduction or proposal to have these smaller lots, smaller widths, smaller lot areas. That's something that staff thinks is important for the commission to comment on. Because they are proposing or will be proposing, if this moves forward, lots that are smaller than what was approved in the PUD, the applicant will need to apply for an amendment to the PUD plan that was approved for Headwaters, the overall master PUD plan, to request approval of the smaller lots, again, the 50-foot wide and the smaller lot area. And that application would be run concurrently with any preliminary plat application. Page 36, which is page three of my report, outlines our city's PUD ordinance and things for the commission and council to think about is really when the city is looking at PUDs, we are in part supposed to be looking at having creative designs that, in my opinion, maybe resolve a problem or work around a problem or provide some unique alternative design features that may not work using standard zoning and subdivision regulations. And the intent, as noted in the code, is to provide a greater degree of creativity and flexibility, promote health, safety, order, and convenience, and general welfare of the city. As part of that, there are supposed to be benefits garnered from the PUD with these various opportunities. Maybe it's more efficient, effective use of land, maybe it's to preserve or enhance desirable site characteristics, say if there's a large wood lot, wanting to work around that and not take down trees or clearly preserving wetlands, that's a good thing, although that's required if you're doing a PUD or not. To encourage a variety of organization and site elements and densities, there's some of that in this project. But overall, the city needs, should be shown that there's some type of public benefit to allowing, in this case, the smaller lots and the smaller lot widths. So again, another thing for the commission to comment on. The density in this project, if I did my math correctly, comes out to about 3.07 units per acre, so just above the three units per acre that we strive for in our urban areas. That in part is accomplished by having a smaller lot. So that is one thing that would certainly make the Met Council happy. Doesn't necessarily mean the city would be happy, but they have a minimum floor of three units per net acre that we are striving to meet with all our residential development. Another element in this plan, I'm going to enlarge a little bit here. This is up in the Hidden Creek third and fourth additions. They're showing a park dedication area here. They're also showing this area for park dedication as part of this phase of the development. And so here's Headwaters Parkway coming through the site. This also is showing, having stormwater ponds within the park, and the city code specifically says that ponding, stormwater ponding areas cannot be counted for park dedication requirements. So that is something that I'm sure the developer is well aware of and will need some further discussion. They did submit a concept plan for the park itself. Again, preliminary, great to have something to react to. Couple of things I've been planning out, again, showing ponding area and what's also being proposed for park, showing drive and parking coming in off of Headwaters Parkway. Our city engineer is recommending that that not occur because Headwaters Parkway is going to be, or designed, it will function as a collector's street. And the fewer driveways and access points going on to that is his recommendation. So the park itself will need some vetting out and redesign. Access to the park, certainly trail access or trail connections are great. We'll have a trail on both sides of Headwaters Parkway, so that feature is excellent. And this park, park design, excuse me, will be looked at by the new parks commission probably in one of the upcoming months, not this month. And they'll, I'm sure, have more comments about the exact features in it, but there's still some work to be done in it. But again, it's a starting point for the conversation. What else I got? I touched on the street layout a little bit in the report. I touched on the concept plans and the ghost plans. There's some connectivity we have to make sure happens. We're not, as a staff, real enthused about this dead-end cul-de-sac here. Now, I'm sure the developers don't necessarily have this under contract or under control, but having an internal road connection from site to site versus having all the traffic having to go out to Headwaters Parkway is a good thing for traffic and vehicle movement, similar to what would be happening over on this side to the east. Let's see. City standard is to have sidewalks on one side of all the streets with Headwaters Parkway, again, extending around here and eventually to the south. One thing we are recommending is that the Batumis Trail on the north and west side be continued and that same trail design be incorporated on the south and east sides, so that it's good pedestrian walkway all along there. There are some stormwater and drainage and ponding things. Again, the engineers talked about, again, where they are showing ponding areas, which may work. They're showing some ponding area here. Again, things that all will need to be further analyzed and making sure that where the water flows will flow correctly. And the judicial ditch system is running in the area, and that has to be taken into account. We did receive some preliminary comments from the Watershead District. They, especially as in these phases, all the wetlands will need delineations if they haven't been delineated in the last years. And there are some wetlands shown to be impacted, and those will have to be, the impacts and mitigation for those wetlands will have to be addressed in their designs. The staging, we don't have any concrete information yet as what phase they want to do when, and that'll be something, again, we'll want to know as the project moves forward. So for tonight, we're looking for, again, feedback from the commission for the benefit of the developer and staff about conformity with city standards, conformity with these standards, and any other elements of the project you like or don't like, so the developer can have that information and make this forward. With that, I will stop and take questions. There are representatives here for the developer as well.
Question to staff?
One quick one before. The white areas, are those areas that are tiled?
All these?
All the little white jobbies?
I think those are elevation numbers on contours.
Okay, thank you.
They just don't show up very well.
So my question would be, you know, I welcome development here in the city. When we did this plat, which I think is going on 20 years now, it was pre-recession, I know that. We shrunk our lots considerably in this plat, the entire PUD. Since then, we have reduced our lot sizes in half in the MXR1, which just sits in, and was to a 65-foot wide lot, 7,500 square feet, I believe. And now we're looking to, right out of the gate, one of the reasons we did that was to reduce PUDs in general, so we wouldn't have this mess back and forth. Now, I understand with the master PUD, we have this. I also understand that the city may be more in favor of 50-foot lots because it appeases the Met Council, but I think in this case, we don't need to appease the Met Council. I'm not a fan of these 50-foot lots. I lived in one in St. Paul. I'm not opposed to that size lot. The problem I have is that in St. Paul, when you have a 50-foot wide lot, you have your story and a half house. They made about a billion on after World War II. And then there was an alley with a garage on the back. And here, I'm going to have 50-foot wide lots with two, if you really press it together, you could put a three-car garage on with a doorway. It will fit, but it's tight. And what I don't want is a garage door, streetscape, you know. So I'm not a huge fan of these smaller lots. My last comment on that has got to do with the streets. If we have narrower streets, do we have any street parking left when you have these 50-foot lots?
How much? Because you have water driveways.
Especially in the cul-de-sacs.
That's my comment. At the 65 feet, the overall layout, the ghosting that they've done to help us out, I'm sure the park board will do their due diligence on the park, but I'm not a fan of these 50-footers.
On the same line, what we don't see here are the driveways when they go in and what we'll see later, and all of a sudden, there's going to be this little four-foot strip of grass between driveways. And then you just look at it and go, wow, it's really not what we, what we want. But...
And where do you put the snow?
Yeah.
Well, if snow removal is another issue as well.
Little tiny lots that the Met Council wanted had at least some argument when the Met Council was talking that Forest Lake would be part of their transit district. It ain't so no more. They have told us that there shall never be transit up here again. Lila is very close to this area. And when Lila has done surveys of their folks that are moving to Forest Lake, they're moving for Lila. It is a regional attraction. This would be an amazing place for those families or folks that are planning to have families, be very close to their school. Being close to a great school is a wonderful selling, selling point. But a 50-foot lot with no playground, no yard space, and quite frankly, a very, very tiny park for what I calculated to be about 500 people, just a very, very tiny park for what I calculated to be about 500 people just in these two areas is not something that is going to be attractive to a family. I have some concerns about especially Streets A and E. How wide are there always going to be? Because especially, I think it's Street. Street A and Street E are going to be through streets within that subdivision. Those are going to be the way, that's a major north, south street, especially in the ghost platted areas. And the east, west street, yes, you've got a lot of houses in there. There's going to be on-street parking and I have some real concerns unless those streets are significantly wide to intentionally allow parking. That it's going to be just a nightmare for emergency vehicles. I have no idea where you're going to put the snow on on those streets or especially in the cul-de-sac. It's cool. We haven't had a whole lot of snow the last two years. I'm not willing to roll the dice that we're not going to have significant snow in the future. I I have a real problem with the 50 foot lots. I was around when we did that original PUD. We did for the sake of the PUD and the for the sake of developers being able to build with 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 significant profit. We shrunk our lots and to go below that in an area that the developer knows well and knows what our previous PUD aspirations were is disappointing. Can, when they do the areas that are ghost platted, are they going to have access to those ghost platted areas from the south? Because wow, I I I sincerely hope that they're not planning on using the Parkway as their main access and or that those that that north, south street. It's Street A as their main construction traffic. That's just going to be a melange for the residents that are on there, again, especially with those small lots. Large construction vehicles with, there will be significant on-street parking. I mean, that just is what it is. Two people live in a house. We're going to have at least two vehicles plus their toys. Ken, you mentioned that that we do PUDs for creativity. And I don't see a lot of creativity in this plan, especially since quite frankly, Mr. Bergman's properties that that have been done in Forest Lake showed a great deal and had really good amenities and and I have been very impressed with them in the past. I'm just not sure about about these this 50 foot lot areas. I I I I don't. That's something that I'm going to be able to to fly with.
Commissioners, any comments?
I've been through some of the existing housing that's over there during the holidays. And when people are parked on both sides of the street, it is tough to get a car through there. So I'd be more apt to have wider streets and larger lots.
I would agree with everything the commission said. I really appreciate Susan's comments on the school that's right up the street. And it is a focal point in that neighborhood. I think there's a lot of kids in that neighborhood. And these smaller lots don't work well with families. It's one of the reasons I moved before so I can my kids go to that school. A lot more young families over that side of town. But these lots and make smaller lots for families doesn't, I can't agree.
And any comments back to us?
Not I'm aware of.
No, the only comment that I just want to make, Commissioner Young had noted about the ghost plats surrounding this. What you see in a couple of new commissioners might just not be aware. We do require developers to kind of show how could this interact with those adjacent properties? So that might not be how they'll develop in the future. It's just do these roads line up into the next properties to where those next properties could logically develop according to our, you know, our codes. So just stating for the record and for new commissioners out there, you may see something else come along in the near future or later down the road. That's much different than those ghost plats and that's okay. This is just kind of an some ways an academic exercise to say, how can you, how could this lead to those adjacent developments? But I do want to at least just acknowledge Commissioner Young's concern. We are finding in our, you know, we're we're a developing community now and we haven't kind of seen this neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood for a while. And how as development kind of keeps moving on, the impact that it can have to those existing neighborhoods. And I think that's the concern that's being highlighted here is there could be pressure on the Hidden Creek south to the south and the east of the Parkway when subsequent properties develops, just something to keep in mind.
I would expect for efficiency that that Street A would continue south. I expect it to be a fairly main thoroughfare, especially since the Parkway will have a little bit more limited, you know, entrances and exits and et cetera. That's ton of vehicles. That's just a ton of vehicles.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
With the ghost platter here, we do expect whenever these parcels develop, and again, we don't have a timeline, don't have applications. There'll be at least one street getting all the way out to Fenway. Given another alternative for entrance exit, if you will, to the whole area. And probably one down here to the south someplace. But I agree, Street A, if it continues in this way, well, that'll that'll be parallel or close to parallel to Headwaters Parkway. That will certainly take a lot of traffic. We're hoping, expecting if there's some kind of a road connection here or down here, there'll be alternatives. But these are all good, great comments to hear now, so we can be aware of that going forward.
I, yeah, I I don't expect that that property to the south and east that is that is south of eastern Ghost Plat and east of the southern Ghost. I I don't expect those to to develop in in the near future to have a street out there. And this is a lot of homes. I I am concerned about emergency access and being able to get more than one, one way in and one way out for large emergency vehicles. Especially in the wintertime.
Or even school buses.
Even school buses. Oh, my glory.
I understand a developer is here. Would you like to add anything, get a further clarification, add some comments on what the plan is? We ask that you do please state your name and address for the record and and welcome to the planning commission.
Thank you. My name's John Dobbs, Hidden Creek, Headwaters Land Group. Yeah, so several things. One of them is is that our last choice and our last desire is to do ghost plats on other people's property. We were required by staff to do it. I don't speak for anybody else's land and really don't like the idea of doing it. However, when the staff tells you, you got to do it, we do it. So please, in no way, shape or form, do we speak for anyone outside of the plat that we put up first and foremost. Second thing is, is that, and I understand, I've been here for a while. We've had conversations about density in the past. Some of the presentation that was done by staff, in my opinion anyway, left out some fairly crucial parts inside the well, let's start with when the PUD for Headwaters was done. It was done 20 years ago. As you look around the Twin Cities, you'll notice that a significant amount of attached product does not exist anymore. Very little of it goes up now. When the PUD was done and back when Pratt and other people were building, townhouses was very common. And there is a 6.23 acre parcel in the PUD that exists right up at the top, the cul-de-sac where the blue lines are, that was guided for multifamily. But because of building code, insurance and a variety of other things, this product being detached is actually almost the same density and is a little bit more affordable than an actual attached product is. The builder is the one that put this forward. I'm a land developer. Capstone knows what they do and they do it very well. So what in my experience is, is you can have attached product, which is guided in the PUD. Or you can have detached product, more traditional in essence of a single family. But at the end of the day, I I think, and I understand and I respect everything that's been said. The bigger part of the story, at least in my opinion, is how do people live in cities? How do people pay for houses these days? I mean, I don't know about you guys, but my first house was 75,000 bucks. I've been doing this for a while. I've been doing this since the early 90s. Of the most affordable single family house that'll go in the third phase this year is probably going to be 465,000 bucks on a 65 foot wide lot. That means you have to make 100 grand a year, no debt, to be able to qualify for it at current interest rates, which none of us can control. Interest rates have gone up 400%, 300% in the last whatever years. I mean, they're currently hovering around seven. The single family product in blue, 70 to 80,000 dollars cheaper. 75,000 dollar a year job, you can afford to live in Forest Lake and buy a new house. So it it's not, and I I've known the owner of Capstone for 25 years. I've known his development partner for 30. I've been doing this for longer than that. It's not like we don't want to do affordable stuff and make things functional, but 465,000 bucks? How is that affordable? It, you know, it just isn't. And so we're trying to provide lifestyle housing. We're trying to provide a place where people who live and work in Forest Lake can actually move into a new construction house. For a lot of issues that are out of our control, this is what it is. The road widths are the same as they are in the current Headwaters, Hidden Creek development. So for road width, we just extend that further south. The parkland and park plan, I guess, you know, this is a concept that's been around for a while. I don't know how long ago I was at Park Commission, but I was there several times, four years ago? Three, four years ago in the original Hidden Creek when we first started. And what I got clearly from the Park Commission back then and what Paul Bergerman got before I came to work with him was that we needed to do a central park. We need to try to provide a home and a place, a neighborhood heart. And that we would try to put it in the ground. And that is exactly what we're trying to do. The idea of stormwater ponds in the design that's there, the intent isn't to get parkland credit. I didn't do the calculations in the first plat that came up with this being parkland and and the pond being there. That wasn't my calculation. The pond had to be there for hydrologic purposes. There will be another pond in there. However, the parkland credit gets worked out, we'll work that out. But it's nice to have a water feature. If you got to put a water pond in there anyway, it's nice to at least make it look aesthetically attractive. That's the only reason that it's kind of incorporated in the design itself. In terms of the park program and park use, we've talked about volleyball courts, talked about sledding hills. We look forward to meeting with the Park Commission, working our way through that. But our intent is actually to build the park, all of it. And also, and just use it as credit going forward and put it in the ground. So there's actually a park that gets built for all the residents that are moving in. So that'll be a dialogue we'll have with the Park Mission when we get there. And and just again, just to kind of follow back up to the original. The PUD, the master plan PUD for Headwaters 20 years ago. You know, the lot square footage and overall density of this project, the way it's designed is actually 3.02, not 3.07. We're barely over the minimum that's in the guided use of land use down here. If we go back to just single family, it'll fall under three. So we're not even meeting the intent. Now, I understand, and I do understand the small lot size thing. I get it. I've lived in St. Paul as well. I live in Roseville now and my lot's pretty small. At the same time, I'd love to do things that were not so expensive. But for a variety of reasons, including building roads and other things, it costs what it costs. And so, yeah, there are a variety of reasons why a PUD makes sense here. Not only the original PUD contemplated higher densities in this general area. And our overall density doesn't even barely meets the minimum that was contemplated 20 years ago. And we're way at the bottom of that 20 years later. Cost is always an issue. Lifestyle housing is an issue. I don't like Met Council dictating terms to people any more than you guys do. That being said, I don't see it that way. I see it as trying to provide affordable housing. And I think Capstone does a really good job of that. You can go look at these product in Cottage Grove and in Ramsey. It's already built. We did submit some stuff. Unfortunately, we didn't submitted it late. Capstone did a great narrative on why this neighborhood would work. Perhaps we could forward that around to the planning commission so they could see it as well as the architecture that they submitted. Maybe that would have been helpful as well. So, but yeah, no, in general, we want to try to figure it out. We're very excited by how this has gone. This has been a long haul, this project. It seems like I've gotten to know Susan really well over the years and and the Taylors. And we've all been at this for a while. And it's really exciting to see the neighborhood. I, when I drive through the neighborhood, I I see a little bit of what you see. I also see families. I drove through this evening. There's people out playing ball with their three-year-old kid. And I mean, they're just, it's it's awesome. And then the traction that Capstone's getting, I I'm really excited by how it's going and I I think it's gone really well. So I would like to end it on a positive note and and talk about how awesome it is to be up here and how successful it's been. Capstone's very excited as well. We've had a horrific year last year with the water. Every developer did. It was a nightmare. The year before, we had a drought that was pretty bad. So for those of you that are climate change people, we've seen a couple of really weird years. We're hoping it's a normal year this year. And we can keep going and keep moving with enthusiasm. So I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Do you, is Capstone has built in this development before?
Capstone built the first phase. They're working their way through the second and they'll be doing the third and they'll be doing the rest of it as well.
You, and you mentioned we have some stuff coming forward. You know what they plan for these 50 feet wide lifts? Are they villas, like slab on graves?
They call it the Liberty Product and and after, and they're really very detailed oriented. And they spend a lot of time going around the country trying to find creative solutions that they can use in the Minnesota culture. They're very much from Minnesota. Their office is out of Ramsey. And after extensive research, mostly related to the building code and and things that have changed over the last 15 to 20 years, insurance and association and in association law in particular, it's very difficult to build attached product. It's very expensive. It's very driven by liability. And so when this PUD was put together and 6.23 acres was guided here as attached or mid-density or however they described it back then, this product takes its place. If they did townhouses here, they would cost a little bit more than what they project these detached single families would actually sell for. And I applaud them for being creative about it. I mean, if we're, you know, if we're in Florida or we're in one of these other places where the densities are huge, that's one thing. But we're in Minnesota and we don't, we do detach. That's kind of what the state does. And so, and and I've been in several of these products, both in Ramsey and in Cottage Grove, and it's pretty cute. It's a, it's a really nice house. It works really well. It's definitely not the 15,000 square foot lot that used to be in Forest Lake back in the day. And I understand that completely. And at the same time, we're trying to work with the parameters we've got. And with interest rates starting to go where they are, cost is a real issue. Affordability is a real issue. So.
Other questions to the developer?
Thank you, John, for that.
Chair Gerard, I do have a question. John, do you know if the Liberty Series is the in Buffalo right now? Because we were able to find a Liberty Series in Buffalo.
I, in Buffalo? I don't know the answer to that. They might be. Tom sent over, which I think I for, I thought I forwarded to you. You didn't get?
And and that's okay, but we can share.
I apologize. I thought I forwarded. He did a narrative. Tom Backagies, who is their project manager, did a narrative and also sent over some architecture and some other stuff. So I'll resend that so you guys have it as well and then they can forward it on. I I could have sworn I did. Maybe it got hung up in my outbox and I misspoke. I apologize for that.
And we'll make sure to, if you resend it to
And we'll make sure to, if you resend it, to include it for the council.
Perfect. Thank you.
The previous two phases are the 65-foot lots, aren't they? The previous two phases are the 65-foot lots.
65, yeah.
Right.
All, and all the red lots, well, can't see it.
Yeah, the red ones would be that. Oh, thank you. Yeah, there's the Liberty. Everything in the original 125 lot approved Hidden Creek is 65-foot wide minimums. That's correct.
And, and we're already seeing, as my compatriot down here, issues with the streets and with parking in the streets on the 65, 65-foot lots. When we go down to a 50, I am very concerned that it's going to be just not functional. I'd rather learn from what we have done previously than make it worse. And I get cost. My first mortgage was 12.79. I, I remember it.
Mine was close to that.
I remember it well. Which is why I don't have a whole lot of sympathy with people with 3% and 4% mortgages. But that's, because I'm old. But I, I, I do have a serious problem with the 50s.
And I don't in any way mean to detract or disrespect anything that was said. I'm just trying to point out that there is more to the story than what I had heard before I stood up. There are real consequences to all the decisions we make, all of us. And, uh, and I just want to try to do my best to vet them out.
I understand.
Any questions or concerns you have at a planning commission and the input we gave tonight? We want to make sure when you leave tonight that you're fairly comfortable with what was discussed and...
I understand.
Want to move this forward, so we just want to make sure it doesn't take 27 renditions to get there.
We do too. Thank you very much for your time. And yeah, it'll be a work in progress. Hopefully it won't take as long as the first time, but we'll see.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. Ken, you need any further information from us on this?
I don't. Is the commission said their piece?
Yes, I've said my piece.
Don, you were like holding your breath. I go, let me, I'm not...
Chair Gerard, we will forward those comments on to the city council, who is also required to review concept plans and provide that non-binding feedback to the developer. So it's scheduled to go March 24th to the city council. We're giving, as Ken had mentioned, we're giving the Parks Commission their first meeting off. But we will plan to bring that park plan, those concept plans to them, hopefully in April, to kind of keep them moving along and have that information through the planning process, so.
All right. Very good. Thank you all. We'll move to our discussion. So we'll, we'll ask, I suppose we'll start with you, Ken? You have stuff for us?
I, I don't have anything besides the agenda items, so if you want to...
All right.
Have City Administrator Scott speak?
I'll move. I've never understand the difference between discussion and update, so we'll just move to updates. And we have our distinguished councilperson, Larson here tonight, ex-planning commission member. Do you have anything you'd like to say this evening?
Thank you, Commissioner and Chair, for the discussion topic here tonight. Just a couple of things. At the council meeting that we had on Monday, we had quite the discussion about the North Shore Trail plans and stuff like that. So after lots of information from Mr. Goodman and other topics there, we came to a decision for, we had six options for our paving project from 235th to Highway 97. We chose option two, which is an 11-foot wide road with a four-foot shoulder. And then there'll be another two-foot of gravel. So that'll be running from 235th to Highway 97.
Both sides of the street?
Correct. As far as North Shore Trail from Goodview or Greenway to 235th, there's a lot of discussion about the bike trail. So that's a hot topic. So we made the decision to postpone that part of the project until the future. We're also tying things in with the Highway 8 redevelopment there, bike trail along Highway 8. There was a lot of discussion also about the continuing the bike trail through the developments and, and stuff like that and non-existing developments currently. So that was our decision for the North Shore Trail area. The other thing I'd like to point out is yesterday, from 4:00 to 6:00, we had our Highway 97 matter. And I don't know if any of you folks were able to make it to that, but I think it was, uh, very well attended. There was a lot of questions, a lot of things answered from MinDOT folks. There's council members as well as the city administrator. Police and fire department were there also to talk about things or share. So I think that was very well received. Other than that, we're busy. The, uh, yesterday, we took a tour, the council members as well as the city administrator, some of the folks from Public Works. We went to Hugo Public Works to look at a new public works facility for, uh, concept and thoughts. We toured Hugo and we also toured the city of Ramsey. So then we came back and had some chats along with our architect crew and, uh, Kraus, it's not Kraus, is it Kraus Anderson, I believe it is, is the builder. So sat down after our tour and kind of went over a couple of quick things about that. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Uh, one question for you. North Shore Trail, are we, you know, there was a lot of paving options, whether it's just gonna skin over it or dig it all out. And which one do we land on as far as that goes? Are we taking it down to the...
I think they're going with a 3/4 inch overlay. That was our, I think that was the, the best decision based upon Mr. Goodman, Goodman's recommendation. Otherwise, we're gonna find a lot of fractures and it's gonna crack anyway after a few months, just because of the movement and stress of the road.
Mr. Chair, if I could interrupt. The, the design that's being put forward for 235th to 97 will be a full-depth reclamation, reshape, claim, reclaim and pave. So that'll be a full pavement replacement. From 235th back to Greenway, right now, the idea is to not do anything essentially, except pothole patching. That could change as the spring thaw comes along and we may have a disaster on our hands or something. You know, we, we certainly may, uh, we'll keep that topic open. But for now, the, the plan is, is to just pause on anything there. But just to be clear that, uh, there was much discussion. Yeah, there was a lot of discussion about a thin overlay. We have decided to move forward with bidding out the full-depth reclamation, so all the pavement removing and putting back down. When bids come in, you know, we'll make a decision too, right? I mean, if it comes in near estimate, I, I would assume the council would move forward. If it's considerably over, we'll have another conversation. If it's considerably under, you know, so, well, you know, yet to be determined. Because right now, I, the bidding climate is just so volatile, it's hard to know.
There's a lot of moving parts still going on.
Oh, yeah. You know, and I personally have a vested interest. I live on North Shore.
They're not paving that part of the area.
I know, there's, yeah, across from the lift station there.
We're just leaving a little dirt spot right there.
They're gonna dig it up, but they're not gonna re-tape it.
That's kind of what it looks like now. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very kindly, folks.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Another item the council approved Monday night was the ordinance amendment for the multifamily district. Remember, we talked about the 15 to 20 units break. That was approved.
Thank you.
That'll be in effect tomorrow as the effort gets published in the paper. On the Highway 97, it's my understanding too, their project will start maybe in June. And the west end will be under construction first, going out by Loves. That'll be done hopefully this year and then the east end gets done next year.
So it's, it's a 25 project? I thought it was a 26, 27?
25, 26.
So he's starting in '25.
And they're closing 97, right?
That, that western part of it?
Yeah.
Because they have so much soil remediation work to do.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
I just want to know how they're gonna get from A to B, but that's not my problem. Because I live on the other side.
I, I did appreciate, and I, I went and they, they did a really nice job last, last night. So I, I appreciated that. But they are not going to start 97 until the county finishes, substantially finishes Broadway. So they won't be starting 97 until June. It is, county's starting Broadway in April, right?
Up there, yeah.
Yeah. And so that we won't have both of our major east-westers under destruction at the same time. I appreciated that.
Sounds like, it all sounds like good planning.
Well, we'll pat ourselves on the back.
Assuming that, that mother nature...
Yeah, one other thing I wanted to add. We are still down two planning commission members. So again, invite your neighbors and friends and contact the city council about. If they're interested, we would like to have two more.
Or your enemies. Either way, friends or enemies, we'll take them all.
Uh, Mark, do you have anything you'd like to add this evening?
I think that's about it. I, I thought it was excellent work tonight and thank you for being here and being a part of it.
Any questions of Mark? Abby, Ms. Whitman?
Thank you. I wanted to say thank you to the commissioners that were able to attend our boards and commissioners training late last month, something that I think our new administrator and our clerk, Jolene Chaika, want to do annually, just to keep everybody up to date and refreshed. And it's a good refresher for us. And I really love when we can sit in meetings and say, remember, we're supposed to follow some rules. So thank you, all of you. And thank you all for who didn't eat anything, because I had lunch for two days. And then I also wanted to make you aware that the EDA has put on their 24, 25 work plan, some analysis on Headwaters 123. As many of you know, some of you don't know, Headwaters 123 was originally a part of the Headwaters planned unit development and was slated to develop for residential uses. Half dozen years ago, maybe, the city changed that for business, guiding it for business park uses. And we've been getting a lot more inquiries on the property. Smaller users, nobody that wants 123 acres. A lot of residential, including one of the concept plans that you recommended the council deny, and the council did deny, at looking at some opportunity for residential through there. So in early April, the EDA and the council are gonna hold a joint work session. The goals of that work session are to look at the EDA's work plan for the rest of '25, look at the next 18 to 36 months. But a large part of the focus will be on Headwaters 123. Do we continue to maintain guiding it in this fashion? Are we still really holding out hope for one single user? Pros and cons to different types of land use and development constraints that we've learned about? I can certainly keep all of you informed of when that meeting is. It'll be an open, public meeting. Whatever we discuss there, though, we'll come back and consult definitely with the planning commission. Certainly if there would be future land use changes or contemplated. But wanted you to at least be aware that we're really starting to look at, how can we be more proactive about that future development of that site? Because it is seeing a lot of development pressure pinpoint right in that area.
Abby, is, is all of that in the MUSA?
It is. Yep, the MUSA boundary extends to the southern line of the Hidden Creek South property that you just saw tonight on your concept plan. That's our, the end of our 2030 MUSA. Anything beyond that's in our 2040 MUSA. So kind of thinking a little bit further out in our development horizon. Because we have a staged MUSA.
I just couldn't remember where the line was.
Yeah. And that's just a great question and probably something that we can probably start doing a little bit more educational filler in the tail end of some of these shorter meetings to help bring some of our new commissioners up to speed on our comp plan, understanding the functions of it, some of the content of it. Because later this year, we're gonna probably start talking about how we develop the plan, what kind of plans we want to do for updating that comprehensive plan over the next couple of years. So, you know, it seems really early. You're looking at me like, didn't we just do this? But it's essentially planning for the plan is what we'll be doing later this year.
So as long as we're doing so well on planning, we might as well go back to zoning here. On these short meetings, we would have time to cover more zoning. And I know Claire likes to come and join us and sit here and present. So how are we moving along on that?
We, uh, Mr. Chair, we are working through landscape ordinance options. Where that was a sticking point of plant units and coverage. The city attorney reviewed the definitions. The good news was all the definitions we were proposing to Jane, she had no comments on. But she found some other things that we need to look at further. So we are, in fact, Claire and I spent two hours on it yesterday and we're gonna spend some more time on it Friday, trying to get, we, they're not forgotten. So I'll leave it at that. And we're striving to get those two sections and the lighting through the process. I don't, we, Abby had a good point earlier this week. We don't want to rush it and miss something. We want to do it right. And the attorney review caught some good things and we're making sure we do it all correctly the first time.
Um, just to follow up on that, Chair Gerard, members of the commission, I think when we started this process, we talked about this, overhauling the zoning code at one false loop. There's some risks in it, right? You work on it over a long time and then you adopt it all at once. And then when you adopt it, so much of it can be kind of outdated. And so we really wanted to kind of piecemeal it, really looking at some of those low-hanging fruit. I think one of the things that both Claire, Ken and myself kind of learned in that is low-hanging fruit really should be like, let's look at one ordinance at a time. You know, I don't want to say bang it out and move on type of thing. But I think even though lighting, landscaping and definitions seem a little bit innocuous, nothing about our code is innocuous. We want to just make sure that whatever we're putting back in and, and we're altering it is, really works for the long run. So we'll get those cleaned up. They may end up coming back before you, before going back to the council. But then what I think what our hope would be is that you'll, you'll just kind of see one subject matter at a time so that we're really honing in, taking a deep dive, cleaning it up, moving on.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I did have two other things I keep thinking. Abby and I, and our engineer, we've had probably the last month, several meetings with developers looking at residential concept plans in this area and then over off of Goodview in that area. We had one earlier today, in fact. We, I, I expect, I'm gonna speak for myself. I bet we have four, five, six preliminary plots come in in the next 60 days.
Please remember our discussion on lot widths.
Yeah. It would be nothing for you to, the city, to see 300 homes plotted yet this year.
Here's my question. Do we have water for, um, remembering, we're still under the White Bear Lake lawsuit and, and we're kind of on the edge of that. Lot of homes, a lot of water. And both for, for pumping capacity and treatment capacity.
So far, the engineers have not raised a red flag on that. They're in all the discussions early on.
They rebuilt a lot of that stuff.
Yeah, I, I, I remember, but...
The other thing I wanted to add besides that is we are now getting, I, at least I'm getting, a lot of inquiries about cannabis.
About what?
Cannabis. The retail sales, the micro and where they can grow. Was our ordinance say? We haven't adopted ordinance. We got adopted in November and now the state's getting closer to maybe actually having their act together. So people are, are interested in trying to, A, figure out if, how receptive Forest Lake will be. And B, what are the rules? Where can they go and that kind of thing? I, I've, again, had several inquiries about it. So I fully expect, once the state has their... about it, so, I fully expect, once the state has their rules in place, however, that'll flesh out that we will be seeing some interim use permit applications for either retail or for grow facilities.
Help me remember where we were allowing growing, I thought it was in ag?
Ag and conservancy and the industrial, all indoors.
Bi-conditional use permit.
No, IUP.
Or IUP, excuse me, interim use, no outright permitted uses.
Our zoning maps are pretty clear.
So, look forward to that, that's all, I really, I think that's all now.
As long as you're making water comments, you know, as long as you're tearing up my whole road, how about dropping some water pipes down there, now, I realize, our city engineer, Ryan, has pretty much emphatically stated, I'll be dead before it'll be water back there, but, I do like to, and I'll do this for Mark, sort of clarification, when, when we merged with the city, or, if you lived in the city, or you were annexed, if you lived in the township.
Hostile, annexed.
We were assured that we would have all of the amenities and utilities that the current city had, and I would say we're kind of batting O for three, but I'm not gonna get on my soapbox, but, just, just to bring it up, I, my neighbors ask that all the time, because we got poor water back by us, got a lot of tannin in it, you can't keep your white porcelain white.
You got sanitary sewer.
Yep.
Yep.
That's one of the three, isn't it?
Mr. Chair, if I, if I could, just, as, with my background as an engineer, as Abby and Ryan are figuring out, and then Ken, I do tend to stick my nose into things maybe a little bit more than I, I probably should as, as the administrator sometimes, but, it was one of the questions I asked Ryan about right away, on that section of North Shore Trail, hey, you know, why, why wouldn't we extend water out there, and we, we had a little bit of a conversation there, I think Ryan might think the conversation's over, but, I, I do want to circle back to that, I think it's a fair question.
At least put the pipes in the ground.
Well, yeah, of course, it's a bit more complicated than that, but, yeah, yeah.
Those soils are so lousy that you'd be break, they'd break as fast as you'd try and use them.
The sewer survived, well, most of it, anyway.
That's the part that dropped the middle, eh?
All right, well, that's, yeah, that floats.
No, I, I think, in, in general, sewer and water service, in the northeast part of town, is, is a, a very long-range topic that should be discussed with, with some, some study, and I'm certain there has been study of it before, but, I, I, I think it's not something, at least in pockets, that may still be worthwhile of discussion.
Thank you. Abby, anything else?
No, sir.
We've gone all over the place here, Tim, anything, Susan?
No, sir.
Don't hear it.
Jesse? I have nothing, hearing that, Chair is looking for a motion to adjourn, have a motion, and I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second, it's an undebatable motion, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, thank you all for your service this evening, do we, are we back in, what are we, at the...
Two weeks, we're about fifty-fifty on whether...